Welcome to the First Citizens Open Forum. It's come to our attention that many residents of Narragansett are unable to register comments or suggestions to the town council and the town at large since open forum part of the town council meeting has been moved to the end of the night after all of their business. Schoolchildren, parents of small children, working parents, as well as our senior population, have all requested that open forum return to the beginning of the meeting where it's traditionally been held. It is important that the wishes of the town and Narragansett residents be respected and that the will of the people is heard. Therefore, we will hold an open forum before each town council meeting until open forum returns to its rightful place. Please state your name. We'll go by the three minutes that traditionally were held to an open forum and be polite. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kristin Greenberg and I am all for us having a new state-of-the-art library. I have been bringing my children to the library since they were very, very, very small and now they are 10 and 12. Our library is a treasure and I think that we, as a town, deserve to have a wonderful library. It is an asset to any community and it serves everybody, all ages between learning and education and social and the activities. My children love all of the different programs that have been offered and I feel that more people can be reached if we have a new library and a bigger one that could be at the Belmont Market. Thank you very much.
Gloria Roman, please go over to Narragansett. Two issues I'd like to address. One is that since 2010, no bond has been failed or has not been acted upon except the library bonds. It certainly acts and smells like some kind of discrimination from the three members on the town council board. The other issue is that no other town department needed to come before the town council to have RFPs approved for projects. As a matter of fact, the beach is rebuilding some of their covages and they're not even using an RFP. They know somebody who's going to be doing it, which doesn't sound very kosher to me. Why then is the library not being able to do an RFP without the control of the three council members who were so against the library that they would do anything possible in their pathway to prevent this state-of-the-art library from being completed? You should be ashamed of yourself.
Announcements and presentations, Mr. Pugh.
Thank you. Just wanted to make a quick announcement. There was a young woman who spoke at the open forum at the last meeting from the Pierce School. She spoke about moving the forum up and talked about the library, but she also mentioned that she used the library to study for the Rhode Island National History Day competition and she mentioned that she would be competing in it next week, which was last week. So, just wanted to give an update on that. It turned out that she ended up in first place in the competition in all of Rhode Island and will be moving on to the national competition in DC in June. And additionally, it looks like the Pierce Middle School won the medal in three categories, including two first-place finishes. So, just wanted to congratulate... Just wanted to congratulate Veronica Savatino. That's the name of the young woman who spoke last meeting. So, congratulations.
Item number 13 is a motion to discuss incorrect unauthorized changes to the rules and procedures for the Narragansett Town Council meetings. Is there a motion?
I'll move that motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Discussion this item, Mr. Pugh.
All right, thank you. This is really kind of a considerate correction, administrative error. We voted on moving open forum to the end of the meeting a few months back. It was a 3-2 vote. What we did vote on was limiting the time of the forum, capping it. The old rules had a few lines in there that were related to a limit in time. I'll just give a quick little overview of what used to be in rules. So, here's the wording. However, the open forum portion of the council meeting shall be limited to a total of 30 minutes. But then it continues, it said, "If there are any speakers who have not had an opportunity to be heard at the end of 30 minutes, open forum will be continued at the end of the council meeting." So, essentially, it's a limitless portion. It's 30 minutes and that is really, really stopped because public hearing can come up and then any overflow in terms of people wanting to speak, that's not the end of the meeting. So, we moved it to the end, but the new wording for the meeting refers to the 30-minute limit, but then it has removed the extension, which wasn't part of our vote. We just did a very simple movement to the end. So, I believe that that should be corrected so that there is no limit to open forum in terms of time.
All right, thank you. Any comments from the council?
Yeah, since the open forum at the end of the meeting, it's already 10 o'clock. Three minutes, you know, in three minutes, you're only going to have 10 people speak. We have 15,000 residents. At 11 o'clock at the end of the meeting, you decided you're going to continue. Correct, Matt? That correct?
Yeah, it's 11 o'clock, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, at 9:30, then we have an hour and a half to decide if we want to go tonight, or 55 minutes to decide if we're going to continue the meeting in an open forum. So, I don't think it's necessary to put a 30-minute time period on an open forum that was previously in the beginning of the meeting. It's now been kind of restricted speech towards the end. A lot of people can't wait or kids or whatever. And then putting another restriction on that 30-minute time period, I think is unpatriotic. So, I support taking that decision away.
Council President?
Yes.
Can I speak?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that, yeah, the way this happened, it was just a clerical situation where because of removing it from the front, that just didn't mean to be properly to say that if you don't speak 30 minutes, that was going to go to the end. It's already at the end. So, there's never really been intent to create that cap. It's just a clerical thing.
Wait, so the August 6, 2018 procedures, the town council procedures, rules and procedures for the town council said that individuals are limited regarding open forum to three minutes speaking time. Such time may be extended at the discretion of the council president. However, the open forum portion of the council meeting shall be limited to a total of 30 minutes. And then it says, "If there are any speakers who have not had an opportunity to be heard at the end of 30 minutes, open forum will be continued to the end of the meeting." So, those are the two pieces that we're talking about. So, what had been removed was the part that says, "If there's any speakers who have not had an opportunity to be heard at the end of 30 minutes, open forum will continue to the end of the meeting." Because, as you know, sometimes we never start open forum until after 8 o'clock when we was at the beginning because of public hearings, but the total 30 minutes has always been there.
Well, because you have...
It's just never really been enforced.
It was because you started 7:30 and then public hearings at 8:00. So, that's why it was limited to 30 minutes, but there's no reason to...
That's not, that wasn't the reason. No, it was just a 30-minute cap on the open forum. You could do 15 minutes at the beginning.
But there is no cap. It says, "Any speakers who have not had an opportunity to be heard at the end of 30 minutes will be continued at the end of the council meeting." So, there is no cap. There's no overall cap on the open forum.
It says, "The open forum portion of the council meeting shall be limited to a total of 30 minutes." I mean, when I was president before, the three-minute rule, I very rarely enforced. People probably remember that and a lot of people I could criticize for that because the meeting's been long, but there was, there's rules, but the 30-minute cap's never really been enforced.
Okay, I'm just saying, there's a sentence in here that specifically says, "Any speakers who have not had an opportunity to be heard." I mean, it's right here.
Right, but the 30 minutes is starting from when the clock starts ticking, right? 30 minutes starts at 7:45 because you have, that's how it works.
Are you telling... It says there, anyone who has not had an opportunity...
Listen, I'm not, we haven't enforced the 30-minute rule, so...
Okay, so, but now you're...
But it implies that like something was done that was wrong. I mean, the 30-minute rule exists. If people haven't had an opportunity, you're going to continue it to the end of the meeting.
Okay, so then something similar should be added.
So, we can fix that. We could, I mean, I don't want to do another work session on it, but we seem to have concerns about the procedures, but okay. I just wanted to, but the cap is there.
But it explains that it's not a cap. It's for that portion. It moves from the beginning to the meeting to the end of the meeting. That's how it was. There was no cap. It was a pause period to then finish at the end of the meeting. The town manager just explained it was a clerical error because of the grammar and it didn't make sense in that wording. There was no cap. Anyone who climbs up and speaks in the microphone is going to tell you the same exact thing.
All right, go ahead. Thanks, go ahead.
Carleen Town, Narragansett. I know the consultant for the Love Your Library group wants us to keep rebuttals down and the positive side up, but for me, the time has come to put the boxing gloves on them. The change of rules to keep open forum to a 30-minute time limit is another attempt, just like the one to move open forum to the end of the meeting to dis... Again, this is a democracy. It is not a monarchy and you are not the king, Mr. Newicks.
All right, is there anyone else? Yes.
Hi, Susan Amoruso, 111 West Bay Drive, Narragansett, obviously. First of all, I just oppose the whole fact that the open forum was moved from the beginning of the meeting, as it's always been, to the end. And it's been pointed out that only two towns in the state of Rhode Island have that done. So, we've switched with a very small minority group, but one town that had that has flipped their entire council because of that stance. I think to put any time limit on it is just not democratic. I mean, people have things to say. You should be welcoming the fact that people want to have an input. As long as you're respectful, as long as you voice your opinions, there's no threat to it. You should be allowed to speak and if you want to stay here till 11 o'clock to say something that's important to you, to stay that length, then so be it. I mean, I just think, first of all, it should be restored to the way it was and if it can, there should definitely not be a limit upon timing for people to have open forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Stanley.
Stanley Jowski, Narragansett. You know, over the many years I've come to meetings, I'd say 99% or maybe 95% of the time, 15 to 20 minutes at the beginning of a meeting was at 7:30. Between 7:30, it was more than enough time to cover the two, three, or four people that come. So, I do, I do think that if we look at at least 15 minutes before, so sometime between 7:30 and 8 o'clock, if you get 15 minutes available, then you've got five people. And very seldom have we had five people unless there's a contentious issue. So, we should allow people to speak. That's at least five people that need to go home because they're too old, whatever the issue is. So, let's, let's five people talk before and then the rest of us can speak later. As far as the limit, I think, I think if we're getting into 11 o'clock, maybe you want to cut it off, but I do think, and I do think it's right for allowing all the people the ability to speak here and we should, we want to hear what they all have to say. And if they, enough conviction, they want to stay, stay here till 11 o'clock, they've got something to say, I really wish you would allow them to talk, let them all talk as long as possible, at least till 11 o'clock. So, going back to the old style, at least 15 minutes ahead and as long as you want till 11 o'clock, I think you just fairly adjust it. Thank you.
Gloria Roman, 33-Wee, Delaware Road, Narragansett. Mr. Pugh just read the statement from the town charter. Mr. Maddox, you twisted the interpretation. That's called psychotic rationalization. I think it's about time that our solicitor keeps our town council to the charter. There's always some psychotic rationalization to change things. It's about time, Mr. Solicitor, that you keep the town council, that they keep to the charter and the interpretation of the charter. And also, this is a, it's supposed to be a democracy, but it's not a democracy. When you decide that our residents only have 30 minutes to voice their opinion, we should all be allowed to come up and voice our opinions, just as you voice your opinions. We elected all of you up there. Therefore, you should be listening to constituents, whether the people that come up voted for you or not. And I'm sorry that you're bored, Mr. Maddox.
I think we've reached a new low when we call people psychotic. I really do. I think we've reached a new low and it shows the character of the people coming up. I do not personally attack. I see the character of the people coming up.
Mr. Maddox, you're around and it's behavior. I called your behavior psychotic, but of course, you'll continue to rationalize the way you think so, you think they are. And I think your smirkiness...
Your psychotic rationalization. That's, I do not attack, I don't attack any person.
That is not an attack. That is not an attack.
Yes, it is.
That is not an attack. It's an attitude.
You were going to attack that guy. More than that. But she came back up to the microphone. She'd have her to call time, have her removed from the meeting. These people are out of control. She just tried to use that red. Chris, Chris, don't, don't dignify them. Just go back to your seat. Richard.
There's no doubt, I do plan to speak in open forum. In my case, once I missed the second part of Midsummer Murder, the ninth shot anyway. But our behavior has reached a low point and this is disastrous for any rational body to get into this type of behavior. And I find it counterproductive to the success of a library to have the continual hatred expressed by the proponents of the library. This is a counterproductive move.
So, essentially then, we would restore the, if there are any speakers who have not an opportunity, the thing that was clinically removed to be heard at the end of 30 minutes or open forum will be continued to the end of the council meeting? I mean, that's essentially what you're asking?
Yeah, again, we, we disagree on the placement of the forum. That's, you know, that's happening, that's, you know, that ship has sailed. This is a correction to what I perceive to be a change that we didn't grow on. So, I don't see that, there was not a hard cap because people could speak to infinity within that meeting. Now, there's a hard cap of 30 minutes. So, this is a correction. I believe that was unintentionally and I believe there should be no cap.
So, the information that Matt read at the beginning was not a vote that you were on the council table, it was a previous council, correct, Matt?
It was in August of 18, yeah.
So, it was previous council. So, the previous council voted to cap it at 30 minutes. That was a vote?
No.
That's the disagreement, obviously. I mean, that's what Gerald is saying. You're saying that it wasn't, so...
It gets moved to the end of the meeting. It's not a cap.
I think what it is, is that I think for our purposes here, it's a motion to discuss. The clerk had, I know had removed, that's what you had seen, a member moved. I didn't know what a member moved. Speakers who have not had an opportunity to be heard at the end of 30 minutes, open forum will be continued to the end of the council meeting. That gets put back in. It still reads confusingly and we'll have to come back and fix that at some point, but that was, that change wasn't voted on, so... But I think there's two different points of view on what is going on, so...
So, we can take a look, also take a look at that vote we finally made, what was said, and we can make other changes. I mean, some towns and cities in our state only allow residents of the town to speak. That's something we should consider. Certainly, that might be something that may will benefit for us right now. I mean, there's, there are a lot of people that come forward, even tonight, that don't live in Narragansett, they're not taxpayers and many towns and cities do not allow them to speak, so maybe we can blend that. South Kingstown requires that speakers have to sign up in advance so that their topic is known. So, if we're going to take a look at this, and Terry can certainly take a look to see what we did vote for, let's take a look at other options and be able to streamline it so that we don't need to be here until 11 o'clock at night.
So, are you going to restrict it just to residents or to taxpayers? Property owners?
Well, it could be property, it could be anything. I'm not, I'm not suggesting one thing or another, Patrick, but saying that if we're going to take a look at this 30 minutes, let's take a look because we want to streamline it down, so we don't have to be here. I mean, I don't want to listen to someone that's going to come here from Las Vegas who want to talk to us about what we should do. It's just not important to me, especially if we've got a non-property owner. But if we're going to make it so it's more streamlined, let's do that. But I think we still need to look, I believe that we did vote on a 30-minute cap last August.
Thank you. Yes?
I just, yeah, this cap, is that actually written there, cap?
It shall be limited.
Shall be limited, but not cap, correct?
But it's important to remember that we have not, Matt has not been implementing it. It's there in writing?
No, I know, I just wanted corrective terminology.
Open forum portion of the council meeting shall be limited to a total of 30 minutes.
So, it's limited, okay, not capped. Because those are two different words, first of all. Individuals, three minutes, 30 minutes, you know, for the whole town to speak as well as non-residents that actually use this town, like we saw tonight, I think is very important. I think that those people that you were just talking about, maybe they're not from Las Vegas, but they may be from South Kingston, and when they come into this town, they do contribute to the town.
They do, sure, but why, you know, we are a representative government, but we don't represent the people that do not live here or do not own property.
Sure, but you represent the businesses. The businesses in the town that have those people that come in and...
Mr. Howell just made his statement.
Okay, well, she was asking me, so I just wanted to communicate with her, but... So, I'm not sure why the voters, you know, can't speak their minds, you know? Everybody should have the opportunity to speak. You know, it would be nice to be able to speak about the subjects that you're going to vote on, but since you moved that to the end, it's just us just giving us, you know, your opinion after the fact. I don't think that's constitutionally correct at all. I think our voice should be heard before you make decisions. And for the, after 30 minutes, if we're taking your time, you know, too long and it goes on to 11 o'clock and you have other things to do, where the people here are taking their time to sit here and wait for that time to speak, I think as voted, elected officials, you should be able to sit here for as long as the individuals would like to speak. So, like I said, I would move at least the 30 minutes back to the beginning before your votes so everybody can have a fair shot to just give their opinion, maybe change your minds or offer you different suggestions or advice that may not have been thought about. And then whoever didn't speak or was waiting in the back room, couldn't get in, can come in here and speak their mind at least. I think that would help you get votes and be re-elected, but if you decide not to do that, then...
No, no, let's not do that. Let's not get re-elected, please.
Well, you know what I mean? If you just kind of worked with us and sort of against us, maybe that would benefit all of you.
Matt, one point of clarity. Are individuals allowed to speak on all motions that are put on our agenda, public comment?
Typically, public comment was for items that weren't on the agenda.
No, so, I mean, so if a motion is on the agenda, then comment isn't, there is something that they cannot speak on. If there is a motion, say any of the motions that are on tonight, any person can speak on that motion when it's being discussed, correct?
Yes, that's true.
So, there's, there's plenty of time that people can speak before a decision is actually voted on for comment when any motion is on the table. So, that's, that is something that we do.
I think the easiest thing to do is change that "shall" to "be limited" to 30 minutes and change it to "may" be limited to 30 minutes. It matches, it's never enforced anyways. So, just waiting up on that "shall" to "may" and I think that solves everybody's problem.
Yeah, I mean, no, but never, I didn't even know I were having this discussion. I mean, we never limited it.
Well, I think that will solve everything.
Well, you know, the rules are rules, so I feel like they should be accurate. I understand, you know, it's, may not go into effect often, but again, this was not a motion to reconsider anything or to change any of the rules, it's just to go back to how it was before that wording was changed. And if anyone would like to add a new motion to the minute or change anything else, I think everyone's able to do that, we all have one vote. Just a correction, that's all.
All right, thank you. It's a motion to discuss. All right, next is item 14, a motion to appoint two individuals to the historical... It's a motion to discuss, there's nothing to vote on.
No, it's a...
Discuss.
And correct.
But we said what unauthorized change was Terry described.
So, it's still...
The sentence is there. She described, there was never a vote with the council to change that.
Oh, so that would be correct? Okay.
Item next is the open forum portion of our meeting. Comments of, to comment on issues that are going on in the town and comments are restricted to three minutes. Yes? Yes, Mr. Howell, third floor.
All right, so I just wanted to speak on a decision that was approved last meeting for the $19,000 of sand to be placed on the beach. I just wanted to oppose that. I just wanted to give you guys some insight on that gravel. You know, there's problems with that gravel. It's sand, but it's gravel sand. It's not beach sand. Our beach sand consists of shells, Atlantic corals that are all grinded up, not gravel from gravel pit that's turned into sand. There are a few problems with that sand. It is unnatural and if we look at the different beach environments and the animals that use that beach environment, such as clams and other animals that use that environment, that sand is actually detrimental for them. It's not natural, all right? It's also moving. I took pictures from last year after they put down the gravel over the rocks on the far southern side of the actual beach and within two days, I had pictures of the rocks being exposed. It's washed away. Where does it go? Well, it goes a little bit offshore, makes some sandbars, but it also goes into the river mouth. The river mouth is getting clogged. There's problems with vessels navigating through the river. There's also, the river is dying. I don't know if you know this, but when you choke off the river, the strikers can't go up there and breathe. We do have breeding class strikers and also holdover strikers. When your big holes used to hold a lot of winter flounder back in the day, those holes are filling in now. Those habitats are disappearing. Winter flounder is a real problem in the state and there's very limited access to fish for that, except in that river. There's also algae in there right now. I went in there the other day and there's just tons of algae all the way up to Gilbert Stuart. I mean, let alone you can't throw a rod without getting algae before you get a fish, but that algae, that green algae, is taking the O2, the oxygen, away from the water. There has been a dredging project and everybody... There has been a dredging project and everybody really thought that dredging project was gonna be something that was gonna open up the mouth, but it really didn't. What it did was just put the sand up onto the ashfires, which is great, but it didn't really solve the problem that I'm looking at. Solutions, we need to dredge the river, we need to put the river dredgings back on the beach, we need to make an artificial reef off of Coast Guard. This town has looked at different work forums and for twenty years about different things, different considerations, but we're just still putting nineteen thousand dollars worth of sand on a beach that's not even native to our beach. If we can just come to a conclusion on how we can fix this, there's other, some other things for erosion. Your beach is getting eroded away, it's not overcrowding, it's actually that the high tide's coming up, the sea level rise and your beach is getting eroded away. You replenish the dunes right in front of the middle parking lot, it would be nice to actually also put the dunes on the south side and limit that parking. Changing the parking to do a different configuration, maybe residential parking in the middle and also on the other side, but maybe some metered parking on Ocean Road.
Thank you. Yes?
Yeah, since my attempt to employ a mediator for the library dispute failed, it is time to consider an arbitrator for this endless and divisive dispute. I've been following this rather closely since 2014 and am a member of the Naragansett Finance Committee, which has long asked to review the library situation, but no call has come to the committee. I will make the arbitrating decision. The library would be limited to the fifteen thousand five hundred square feet, the old IGA market, period. The liquor store will remain a liquor store, there will be no work done on the second floor. And I believe it's only useful for storage if you can find people who can bring it up upstairs. This proposal will be limited to a cost of five point eight million, the bond issue and the one point three million planned donations. No work will start without the planned donations in place. I don't think the town will find a buyer for this white elephant, for this shuffleboard court and the liquor store for anywhere near the two point eight million expended. It isn't cheap to maintain these three separate structures. I don't know what the cost is, someone, the town has to bear this. The town has greatly reduced its financial flexibility with the two point eight million dollar purchase. The divisiveness, and we just saw it tonight again, is weakening the chances for a bond issue at a reasonable interest rate. If, the people who are, in my view, behaving in a rather irrational manner are causing great problems with the interest rate, and this is recorded and this is not healthy. Let's end this dispute by hiring me for no cost as an arbitrator. But this will cause everybody in the room to say, what a horrible decision, but that's important because an arbitrator makes decisions that are unlike by everybody.
Thank you. Yes, Carleen?
Carleen Town, Woodhill Road. At the last town council meeting, Mr. Davis opined that four of the five initiatives were invalid, the last one because it was directed at a specific decision action properly exercised by the town council. So why didn't he opine at the January twenty second meeting that the motion to sell the Belmont building was invalid? Because it was in direct conflict with a specific decision action properly exercised by the town, previous town council. The Belmont building was purchased with the specific intent of renovating it for a new state-of-the-art library here in Naragansett. In past meetings, excuse me, Mr. Davis stated that bond council said that the bond was location-specific, but at the last meeting, he vacillated on that question. Isn't it time to get a legal ruling on that issue? Was the bond location-specific or was it not? And speaking of the Belmont building, I, you know, I'm sorry, but I'm tired of you muddying the waters with your semantic battle over the name of the property the Gilbane group sold to the town. It is not three useless structures as you've called it. It was sold to the town as two parcels with a two point four million dollar price tag for one and a four hundred thousand dollar price tag for the other. And you keep referring to the upper floor as the shuffleboard room. If only an RFP had been issued, we might have been shown how that shuffleboard room could have been incorporated into the modern library that this town deserves. I'm not an architect or an engineer and I don't believe rigid or anyone on the town council is either. So let's let the experts decide the validity of using that property for the library. And why don't we have an RFP and cost estimate for renovating the Belmont IGA site? The answer is, folks, all you have to do is look at the three council members on the right side of the stage. They would have vetoed any RFP proposed by Mr. Pugh or Mr. Murray and that veto would have tabled the motion forever unless one of the three had had a change of heart and resubmitted it. Highly unlikely. Sort of like a snowball's chance in you-know-where. And Ms. Lawler, yes, we all can speak to the motions, but we need open forum to speak to items that are not motions. We're always cautioned to speak to the motion when the motion is there, but we cannot speak to motion our minds about pro, about things that are going on in Naragansett if they're not related to a motion, if we do not have the time in open forum. Thank you.
Again, did you already speak? Open forum?
That was loud.
Nice quote, nice quote. Mary Chalk in Naragansett, nice quote.
Open door unlocked. I just became aware of that we have after-school events that happen until seven PM. I was picking up my grandson the other day and I got up at seven PM, I was outside tonight with three or four of the kids because I was late. And there are events at the schools, PS schools specifically, that take place with children out of the schools at seven PM. And so I'd like to take this time to say, I want, I really wanna commend the library staff for such a good job they've done. They have implemented their best and have served families so well in this community. And that's what I wanna speak to now, it's the people, not the building. The people are so good and that's so good at what they do. So I wanna propose that we let the library staff expand a little bit. And I want them to utilize all the facilities available, namely the libraries of the schools. Each school has a library, we have three libraries in our schools. I want our staff to expand a little bit and serve each library in the school. And what's good about this is they can target their events for the specific age groups and their interests. So when they show a movie, they'll play a movie that's interesting for a ten-year-old or an eighteen-year-old, whatever. So they can target their specific groups and better serve our families that way as they target the groups at the school. And also the children, they don't need to go home at two or three o'clock. It's much better if they can have something they enjoy at that facility. Now they'll enjoy going to school. Hey, it's great going to school, we're gonna have fun at the school. So there's a benefit for having the library do its work at the school buildings. And I think we ought to implement that first. Let's do that first and see how well that works. Well, going over this with buildings, I hear about building, 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 no, staff, staff did the job, not the buildings. Now you can deal with trying to figure out the cost on buildings and what to do with builders, we can do that anytime, fine. It might be two thousand twenty, I don't know. But right now, let them go to the schools and do their job. The other issue, I'll just speak quickly, is sixty-seven percent, I hear sixty-seven percent. There was fifteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight people in this town, fifty, fifty, what is it, I'm looking here, fifty-one, fifty-one hundred and nine voted for. Thirty-two percent of the residents in this town voted for that one, thirty-two, that's sixty-seven. So let's give them the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes.
Susan Amoroso, one on West Main Drive. I actually was gonna speak again, but you know, I just got back from a babysitting stint for my sister's grandkids in Florida. And with this library thing, it's like I'm hypersensitive to all the libraries that I see that are so much better physically, just never mind what else is going on than ours. I was in a town in Edgewater, it's about the same size as our town, not very affluent at all. They had a lovely library. It's simple, you know, but it's large enough and the programs they were offering, computer for edge and planning, I mean, it was amazing. New Smyrna Beach, a little bit higher income, I'd say more comparable to our town. The library is three times the size of our library. Port Orange, that thing was like a palatial estate, but then well, I think we bought it, kind of thing. But I just, I don't see why we can't get a library that would reflect the quality of life that we really want in this town. And I think that's part of what people voted for. They wanted, you know, we talked about housing, affordable housing, attracting families. A library is at the very core of a community and I see all of these, I mean, I was in, oh, the villages, forget that, that's like super dogs, but it's just, I guess I just have library envy. I look at all these other towns and I say, why not us?
Thank you.
Ellen Quenna, one zero nine West Mormon Street. I just saw you roll your eyes at me.
He rolled his eyes to me because I said to him, we're almost on a half hour right now. And he rolled his eyes to me, because if you saw that, you were...
Yeah, I saw you roll your eyes. I mean, you talk about being respectful, that's not very respectful.
I'm okay with him rolling his eyes to me.
I rolled my eyes earlier.
Anyway, what I'm gonna address is, first of all, you talked about with, earlier about open forum and designate if somebody lives in the town or not. I would also like to add, are you going to also point out the people who, who live in the town but don't vote? That's what's done in other towns in other states. So if you want to point out the people who do not actually live in the town, then you should also point out the people who do not actually vote in the town. And as far as, I wanna stress also about the shoes of the library, the schools, the libraries and the schools, first of all, our current staff is not certified to be in the schools. So if you want that done, then the people here need to address that to the schools. I suggest that they bring that issue to the open forum when the school has their, when the school committee has their meetings, because the current staff is not certified to work in the schools. And if you are in the schools, as most of us who are parents who have been in all three schools, the each library is specific to those grades. So you just don't all of a sudden turn an elementary school library into an adult library. They are very specific to the bookshelves, to the computers and the programs that are put in there and they are all adjusted to the space. So if you want that done, then I suggest you talk to the school committee about that. And then lastly, I mean, as far as the shuffleboard in the second floor, again, I suggest that you get an architect in that and you do an RFP. And also too, I want to state what I have always stated every time I speak up with you, the library board has always been open to talking to you. We've always been willing to talk to you. I have not seen you ever, the three of you on the right side, in our building or the town's building. And we are willing to work with you and to say that we are an angry group of people just isn't true. You need to be able to come and talk to us as much as we have tried to reach out to you and you just absolutely refuse to do that. You'd rather sit up there when we try to voice our opinion. You call us an angry mob and that's not true. Jill, I see you rolling your eyes at me.
I'm looking at the clock and it says three oh seven, your time is up.
And I would maybe suggest the next time when somebody else speaks beyond that, that you remind them as well.
You bet, I will.
I asked for people's name and address. I'm assuming the people who said their name and address are telling me their real name and address. I'm not gonna put them up to be testified or put their, if they...
Are you suggesting that I just give my name and address?
No, you said you talked about names and addresses and why...
I'm suggesting what Jill Law referred to, that when people get up and speak, they designate themselves if they live in town.
And I said that I asked for name and address and my assumption is people are telling me their name and address that's accurate. I'm not gonna have the solicitor and make them testify.
Well, I'm saying is if you designate people who live in the town, don't, I'm also, I'm just asking, are you also going to ask if they, that's what they do another time?
Matt, the time's over. I mean, you're already at a half hour open forum, I made a motion to, to close the meeting. You're more than a half hour in, you're not a resident of the town, you've already made me aware of that.
Go ahead.
I'm Tracy Wine-Gardner, I don't live in this town. So it's fortunate for me that Ms. Lawler had me research because you know that there's nothing you can do. You can't get rid of my pension, you can't fire me, you can't not let me be part of a board because I don't live in this town. I merely live in the library. The angry mob situation, the accusations of divisiveness, the conversations that you interpret and say, poor me, everybody's picking on me. Angry mobs are created by petty dictators. No one would be taking your time at this time of night if you were doing what you were hired to do. You have created this, you have two puppets that are helping you and I really hope ten years from now you realize your legacy is that you've kept delaying for two years the fabulous library that will be in this town. Your political careers are over, God knows how you built up your faces in this town, I don't know. It is unbelievable. Thank you.
That motion to adjourn.
You know, I'm just gonna say one thing.
Why are you not gonna say one thing? You're not part of that forum.
Eileen mentioned that I have not reached out. I did go to the library, I've mentioned that many times, so I, just that mischaracterization. I did go to the library in two thousand seventeen, I went, the forty of you were there, it was right when I first started expressing my concerns about the deal. And then I went to the session in the middle of January that I went to where there... where there was a, an open, an open forum essentially at the library. And, and what you just saw, that treatment, that's how I was treated, that's why I call it an angry mob. The next thing is a motion to retire to executive session of the town council in accordance with Rhode Island General Laws forty-two dash forty-six dash four and forty-two dash forty-six dash five subsection A. Real estate acquisition or lease of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property in accordance with Rhode Island General Laws forty-two dash forty-six dash five, subsection A five. First motion.
Salute.
Second. Right, roll a vote, Mr. Pugh.
Just who, aye.
Mr. Murray. Mr. Mannix, aye.
Jill Lawler, aye.
Thank you, everyone.